We're gonna get started, like to welcome everybody to the March seventeenth Madison County School Board Meeting. I think we have a young lady that's gonna open us up for prayer.
Yeah, we're gonna ask Ms. Brooklyn Brown to step to the front. Ms. Brooklyn Brown hails from the great town of Greenville. She is a fifth grade student who is currently at Madison County Central School. Brooklyn is an A B student, an avid reader, and takes pride in the fact that she currently holds the top spot in the A R program with one hundred and twelve A R points. Brooklyn hasn't yet decided on one career choice, but she is currently judging between a chef, an artist, or an engineer, or a scientist. So those are all very interesting career choices, Brooklyn. Thank you for coming and being with us this evening. If everybody would please stand for our prayer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Will you please bow your head and close your eyes? Father, in the name of Jesus, thank you for blessing us to see this day. Thank you for taking care of us and protecting us throughout the day. Lord, thank you for my school, my teachers, and my friends. Lord, I pray that you bless us to finish this school year successfully. Lord, bless the superintendent and the school board members to make the right decisions as we bring all the schools together. We know that Philippians four and thirteen says, "We can do all things through Christ who strengthens us." Lord, give us strength. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Alright, that's all. Say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Maybe he's seated. Okay. We're gonna go to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Any amendments?
No, sir, I will just add one name once we get to it.
Okay.
On a staff trip.
Okay. Alright, no amendments. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
My second.
We have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a self by Ms. Hagan to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion on that, anymore?
No, sir.
Alright, all in favor of? Okay, that's five zero. Okay, public comment. We have three, three names today. Doctor Willett Boyer. We generally have three minutes, but if you need a little bit more.
I appreciate that. Good evening Superintendent, members of the board. My name is Doctor Willett Boyer. I am an associate scholar with the Osceola Research Institute in Monticello, Florida, over in Jefferson County. The Osceola Research Institute, or A R I for short, is a research organization that also does public education. Many of us, myself included, are archaeologists. I'm a historical archaeologist focusing on the time from the beginning of European exploration here through the beginning of the twentieth century. I also have the privilege of serving as an educator myself in Jefferson County, working and teaching U.S. history. A R I has a number of programs that we have been developing that involve students working at sites where we have projects. There is currently a project that is going on here in Madison County in the southwestern part of the county, near the Osceola River. It is a Native American mound site that is almost certainly one of the sites that was visited by Hernando de Soto in fifteen thirty-nine when he passed through here, the site that was called a sea lake. We also have a continuing project we're working on at a nineteenth century plantation that's in Jefferson County. And we would like to be able to develop programs that would be available for use for Madison County teachers and educators as well. Our website has a video series that we've developed about historical archaeology. We have a series of lesson plans in different areas of learning, not just history, but the sciences, English, and other areas that directly revolve around our research. And for the next two and a half months particularly, we're gonna be working at this site here in Madison County. And we would like to, if possible, have Madison County students and teachers that might be interested in participating to come out. As an educator myself, I've always believed that the best way for students to learn is hands-on. You can give them many talks in the classroom, you can provide all sorts of things sitting in the classroom, but the students tend to learn more when they take ownership of what they're learning and actively participate in discovering something new. I can tell the students a lot about American history, but it doesn't compare to them shaking a screen or, you know, pulling something out of the ground and realizing that that's something that was made by the people in the period of time that we're talking about. So we would like to come, one of our board members, Mr. Thomas Harmon, has come with me, he works with me in the field. But we would particularly like to invite students from Madison County to participate in the projects that we've got going on over the next couple of months, possibly as a field trip. In Jefferson County, I've been teaching this as a field class where we have students coming out regularly to one of our sites. And it's not simply something that would be fun or a neat idea to learn. Since we began this field program a couple of years ago, Jefferson County scores on the U.S. History and Course Exam were, started off when I took this over at twenty-nine percent. The last two years with students actively participating in the program and becoming involved, we have our scores up to, at this point, sixty-eight percent on the U.S. History and Course Exam. So the hands-on education is not just something that's neat or fun, it is something that, in my experience as an educator in the classroom, works. It engages students, it gets them excited, it gets them wanting to learn, and it covers archaeology in many different areas. Not just history in the past, but the sciences, you're working with historical documents, you want something that will engage students in research. I was talking with Ms. Hagan a bit before the meeting began. The reason I recognize her name is we have documents from one hundred and seventy, one hundred and eighty years ago that have exactly that last name. You know, we have family members that we can trace for the last couple of centuries. And, you know, this cross is over between Madison and Jefferson particularly because there's a lot of relationship between families, settlers, and folks in this area. So if this is something that the board would be interested in having the students participate in, the superintendent, you and I have spoken a bit as well. But we would like to invite students from here to participate in the digs or the projects we currently have going on. We also can provide in-class instruction, we have lesson plans. As an educator, again, myself, I'm aware that lesson plans have to be tied to the Florida standards in order to be able to be something that teachers can use. So we have developed a series of plans that involve our research that also focus particularly on the standards that educators, that we are already required to teach. So it's not just something that's out there, it's something that directly reflects what teachers in this area are gonna be required to teach in any case. But if there is a way that we can have students from Madison participate in ongoing projects we've got, especially the next couple of months with this project that's going on here in Madison County, we would like to be able to work with members of the board and teachers and administrators at the schools to be able to make that happen.
So what age or grade are you focusing?
I personally am teaching high school students. However, this program has been done in Waculla County. When we were doing the project at Waculla Springs, we had students in third to fifth grade, so we had elementary students. We've had middle school students. It will work in basically many different areas, and we've had successful programs with students in many different age levels. One thing that Mr. Harmon has done is, in addition to his work in the field with me, he has brought, we have a series of mobile displays. One of them is a full-size mastodon skeleton that was basically cast of something that was brought from the Osceola River. And that works especially well with younger students and middle school students. Doctor Andy Hemings, who's one of our board members, couldn't be here, but Andy does underwater work and particularly has an excellent program that involves that and some of our other mobile displays as well.
What is that website now?
Well, if I may approach the board just to give you a little bit better idea about some of what we're doing, if I may. This is our current newsletter with articles about some of the research that we're doing and also a card. This includes our website and our contact information as well.
Is there some type of information that you have available to give to teachers that they're still, still be aware of us?
Yes, ma'am. The website here is one that has our information online. And what Mr. Parkus passed and now is something that we developed for students.
And I'm very familiar with that site.
I wasn't there.
The sixes and the sevens, when I attended school in Greenville, and I lived in Greenville. And we were very familiar with that and the dig sites and all that good stuff.
I was gonna say, I grew up there.
And I don't even visit.
Well, the area there by Greenville, one of the first projects I worked on with students before we formalized our field class is right there north of just where it runs into Jefferson County. There are several historical cemeteries there as well. And again, speaking of the Havens, there's another branch of the Haven family, you know, Greenville and the church that used to be there. There are several sites associated with that. If I may say, the book that I passed The little book that I passed out for you is a particular book that we specifically made for Bay County. We also can develop those same kinds of things specific to the counties that we're dealing with. We're dealing with everybody here in the Big Bend. So, I mean, we can individualize these to particular counties, and we'd like to because, as Willett has said, these kids take ownership once they understand and can see this. The best example I can give you is two years ago when we started the dig at Tremont. We had probably fifteen, sixteen kids. First week, they're, okay, they're interested. We break the ground, oh, they start getting interested. Second week, we now have about ten of the kids that are really interested and a couple, three or four, that are not paying attention. By the third week, now, I have to back up and say one thing. I am what is known as a paleoarchaeologist. If it's not at least ten thousand years old, I really am not interested in it. We have a standing joke, Willett and I, that this is what we call Holocene trash at this site at Tremont. With that said, before you jump in, Willett, you could never, ever ask for a better site to teach archaeology because virtually every time the kids put a shovel in the site that we're on, they find something. And they get excited. We, do you all know Allison Tant?
We do, huh?
Okay. We've had her there several times, and she gets down in the dirt and gets just as excited as those kids. And the programs that we develop, we're trying to focus on the area that the students come from. Another way that you engage students is when they're familiar with the area you're working on. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to approach you since we are working here in Madison County. The students learn more when they're in the classroom and you teach them an abstract idea, or you teach them about a historical event, you know, okay, that may be interesting. When they realize it happened right there in their own backyard, or they're looking at a place that they know of or know about, they get more interested or more excited in it. And Thomas Wright, with our plantation site, we are very fortunate to have that. But the site that we're working on here in Madison County promises to be something very interesting as well because so far, you know, we're finding quite a bit there also. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you all for your patience and for giving us a little bit of a break on time.
Thank you.
Mr. Harmon, you, you, you done?
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, alright, alright.
I'm putting my name over it back up, Willett.
I got it, alright, alright. Mr. Ryan Corningate?
Good evening, everybody, how y'all doing?
Good evening.
First, let me say a big shout-out to Esperantial Learning as an educator myself. I love hearing how we can engage that, so hopefully that's some great stuff that comes forward to the county. Greetings, everyone, again, to the superintendent, to school board members. Thank you all so much for seeing me once again. As you all should have a copy of the preliminary proposal in your package today. I just wanted to come up for you all to share, I know there have been a lot of discussions going on, also with a few school board members about how we can work with Greenville. Ms. Knight, thank you so much for calling me, as well as Mr. Carroll, Ms. Hagan, even Superintendent Pickles. We've been talking about what some of the things we can do at Greenville. There's a preliminary proposal that's given to you this evening, talking about some of the things that we've been working on. We've been connecting with some of our community partners to be able to utilize the site at Greenville and what were the questions that you all worked with us to be a negotiator, transfer of that property to the town of Greenville, so we can work with our community partners to make that a community resource hub, so that we can try to build some community resilience even within our community. You'll see a few specific items that are requested, or that we are kinda envisioning that will be at that site, as well as some of the partners we currently have. And you will have to, excuse me, some of these discussions have really just come within the last few weeks of kinda talking with some of you all and figuring out how we can work this out. But there are a number of partners that we have already approached that are willing to work with us. DSR Public Health Foundation is willing to be a financial partner as well as putting out space and resources within the center to be able to bring resources to the community. Florida University has, we've chatted with them in their extension program to be able to make a community Esperantial Learning farm where these kids will be able to learn how to grow their own food, raise their own food, raise their own food, whether it's chickens or cows as well, and also being able to utilize the space to hopefully approach some businesses and other entities that want to have rented space out there, which will help us to maintain it, to be a community resource center. So I won't go all the way through everything here because I'd be up here way longer than three minutes, but I did wanna just share some of this information with you all, let you know that we are really trying to work to be able to do some of this type of work here in Greenville. We have a lot of partners who want to partner with us to make that happen right out there at the center. As I've shared with you all a number of times before, that site, that property, that location is very sentimental to the town of Greenville and can really serve as a resource for our community, for a lot of families. As, with this closing of this being the last educational site, grade school site, if you will, in the town, we really wanna utilize this also as a supplemental educational resource so that what they're learning in the classroom, they're also getting resources here in the community as well. So as we all know, there are a lot of learning needs for a lot of our students across the county. There are some specific ones in Greenville, and we wanna focus on those things. Literacy, we've worked with the Swan River Regional Library, who actually does not have a space in Greenville currently because they're working on revitalizing a new library. They would like to work with us in that space until that is opened up as well. So I won't be laboring too much longer, but we're working to try to make sure also that in the process of this, we're supplementing the educational needs of students and assisting you all in the work that you all are doing, so, thank you all.
Mayor of Greenville, you forgot to mention, but a big organization, they're thinking about partnering with us. Our bishop was here for the A M E charity.
Yes, ma'am.
And he has mentioned that he's going back to the A M E Association and those directors and whatever, and seeing if they can partner with us and give us some help. Then Doctor Pickles, as you know, the Greenville Training School Committee, you have approved them using the facilities. And that, that particular whatever, we have several megalenders who are going to be given ten thousand dollars and whatever toward financial support and whatever. I'm gonna give a thousand. I can't get ten.
And some of the information is, I did, it's kinda embedded in there, but I did talk about it a little bit.
And then remember the Evans that I spoke, I don't speak out of turn, I did call their name in the last board meeting because I had spoken with them. And then I spoke with her again at Saturday. They have a four oh one, some kind of nonprofit property.
Five oh one C three?
Five oh one C three. They want to, partly locate out there also. Charles Evans' family, engineers and pharmacists and stuff and whatever with their monies, they don't spend money. So there are lots of financial support that are thinking about coming about.
Yes, ma'am. And I, you'll see in there, I put something about silent donors, but Miss Vio has shared a few of them, that's okay, that's perfectly fine. There's also a few others who have reached out, who are willing to work with us. So I did wanna let you know that we are working and trying to have that comprehensive plan.
I'm at Greenville Training, you know, you're trying to get a certain amount of, and
Right.
About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for feed money.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Alright, we're gonna move along to the consent agenda. Alright, we need to make sure now, we remember our training the other day that we had, everybody. We're gonna, consent agenda, four point one minutes, four point two field trips, four point three Willie and Glenn Act, the summer nutrition plan, four point four E-rate contracts, and four point five fish report. Do I? Oh, Ms. Hagan.
I just wanted to make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
May I make the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda items, all of them.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve the consent agenda. Is there any kind of discussion on this?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
On the, the E-rate contract, you see in the blurb there, it shows that you're getting a significant discount there. One of the things, though, that is, this is a little bit different than our other contracts that we normally do. If you look at Section C, which is their terms, it's got in there that you can cancel it at any time with cause or without cause. If you cancel it with cause, you don't owe anything else. If you cancel it without cause, there are penalties that have to be paid. So just make sure everybody knows that because that's not normally how we do it. How we normally do it is anybody can cancel for any reason on thirty days' notice. So I don't know if y'all, I mean, you're getting a real good discount, I don't know that you can negotiate that, but I just want y'all to know that and decide what, you know, if you're okay with that, that's fine, if you wanna try to negotiate that, that's fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you think that I need to pull that particular item for discussion?
We, we haven't done that in the past, but I'm getting the sense that y'all have gotten some good training, and that is the way you're supposed to do it, is you're supposed to approve all of them but the ones you want to talk about and don't talk about.
That's right, that's right, that's right, yes, we, let me, Ms. Hagan.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the E-rate contracts, four point four on the consent agenda, pull that for discussion purposes.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move it to five point seven. We're gonna move the E-rate, well, oh, wait, wait, I didn't ask for it.
Need a second.
Yeah, I need a second.
I have a second.
Got a second from Ms. Hagan. A motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Thompson to pull the E-rate contracts from the consent agenda and move it to the item for individual consideration, it'll be five point seven. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of? Five zero.
Okay, so you had two motions, one was to pull and one was to approve of them, so I think you need two votes, you need one vote. That vote was on the move and it, and now you need another vote on the approval of the original.
Oh, okay, 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 so the original consent agenda, right?
The, the four that are left.
Yeah, the four that are left. Four point one minutes, four point two field trips, four point three Willie and Glenn Act, that's the summer nutrition program, and the fish report.
You had a first by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson.
Right. I had a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve the consent agenda. Any more discussion on that? If not, all in favor of? Five zero. Okay.
I have it written down for you.
Alright, now we'll go to the individual, item for individual consideration. Five point one staff travel, Doctor Pickles?
Under our staff travel, we do have, I got off, off track. We do have two. We have one for Ms. Richardson to go to the administrative assistance training in Tampa in April. And then there is the staff training for the legislative days. And this is the one I do need to add Ms. Gibson to attend, so it'll be Ms. Thompson, Ms. Gibson, and myself, which will, since we're putting it under my name, if you'll travel with us, we'll just come from Title II if you want to ride with us. If not, then, you know, whichever, so, but it'll come from Title II. So I do ask for approval of our staff trips.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the staff travel?
I move to approve the staff travel.
I second.
With the addition of yourself.
Mm-hmm.
With the addition of myself.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Ms. Thompson, to approve the staff travel with the addition to Ms. Gibson, it's Ms. Gibson, Ms. Thompson, and Dr. Pickles. Is there any discussion on this? If none, all in favor of 5.0? Okay, personnel changes, 5.2 personnel changes, Dr. Pickles.
We do have one resignation effective the 20th of this month, and I do ask for your approval.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel change?
I move to approve the personnel changes.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve the personnel changes. Is there any discussion on this? If not, all in favor of 5.0? Okay, volunteers, Dr. Pickles, 5.3.
Before you tonight, you have two volunteers, one at GES or Greenville, and then we have one individual that will be at the high school, our central school, and then at Lee. And I do ask for your approval.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the volunteers?
I move to approve the volunteers.
I second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gibson and a second by Ms. Thompson to approve the volunteers. Is there any discussion on these? If not, all in favor, 5.0? Okay, 5.4 expenditure report, Dr. Pickles.
Before you, it's the January, February check run. I did have one question, so it was Johnson &amp; Johnson Incorporated, that is J&amp;J Strong, that's how they're doing business. I did not receive any other calls, so if you have any other calls, feel free to always call, we will check into it.
Okay.
So I just, we've already paid these, this is the check run, the January one we didn't get in time to put on the February, so this is the reason you're getting them out together. And I do apologize, we'll make sure they're each month and not two months at a time.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the?
Accept.
Accept, I'm sorry, accept the expenditure report.
I move to accept the expenditure report.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Hagan to accept the expenditure report. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, I'd like to clarify something. I know we're a member of PACE, which we're one of 15 counties that belong to it, but I see the $70,157 NIFAC. I know we also take power in NIFAC, but could you give an explanation of that?
NIFAC.
Just so everybody.
NIFAC is for our Skyward system, so we're paying for the financial student system side of that. Any of our PD training, so our instructional trainings, things like that are covered under PACE.
Right.
So that's the big bulk of any of our.
So we can take bits and pieces of PACE rather than, in other words, okay, that's what we've done.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, bank cards, like the travel, the.
The Regions.
245, then there's a 16,035. What I think I would be happier with is a little bit more explanation, in other words, with bank cards.
Is that the Region?
Not that there's anything going on, but in other words, just a little bit rather than just.
More details.
A little more detail.
Is that the Regions Bank? Could I just clarify, is that the Regions Bank?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same one.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
No, thank you. That's it.
Okay. We had a motion, right? No, we already done that? All right.
Yes.
All in favor of expenditure report? Acceptance report? All in favor, appreciate it. 5.0? All right, facilities recommendations, Ms. Hill.
Good evening. Please remember, I'm the messenger. Facilities Committee met again right before spring break, and we added to our discussion the district office here because we had not previously discussed that. After much discussion, the committee still wants to make the recommendation to the board. We realize it is a recommendation and the board, it's not, this isn't even a motion, it's a recommendation, and the board is free to choose to follow the recommendations or not. And so with that being said, and just a reminder that there are community people on the committee that were pretty adamant that they are taxpayers and want us to make good financial decisions. We, Ms. Knight brought up and we discussed, you know, working with local community groups to make sure that, you know, they had an opportunity to acquire building space by working with the board. And so, again, they feel like that we need to look at listing the properties, with the exception of Lee, because we're looking at applying for a grant with the county commissioners to turn that into an emergency shelter. But, but just because we list the properties does not mean that they have to sell. It is up to the board to, to make a decision on if there's a bottom line amount that they want to set or how they want to do that. We did bring up this particular building also and discussed moving the offices up here at the district level out to the schools. That's not necessarily something that can be done immediately, but that is a goal that we could set to try to save more on energy cost. So there are a lot of things that would have to take place, for instance, relocating the bus shop and that kind of stuff, but the committee, you know, is recommending that we look at moving the district offices out to the schools and seeing if we could list this property for sale too. That's the report from the committee.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you.
Okay, how do we?
Mr. Chair, may I speak on that one, please?
Yeah, just a second. Just one second.
Okay.
So I would suggest let's go one by one because they're not all the same. Is the board agreeable to that? I would like to go one by one because they're all a little different and unique. So if we could address the Lee Elementary School first. So I believe the recommendation is to workshop with the emergency management and the county officials the feasibility of operating the facility as an alternate shelter site, otherwise list the facility up for sale or with the realtor, however the board decides they want to sell the facility. So can we?
Okay.
That's the recommendation from.
Will you please repeat that, please?
Workshop, workshop with, continue our negotiations with the emergency manager and county officials, the county manager, and I did speak to her today to let her know. And so we need to continue those discussions, so continue that open discussion dialogue with the county, this board and the county commissioners.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to clear up.
This would be a joint venture.
Yes. I got you, no, I understand.
To see about entering into whichever ownership it needs to be, if we both own it, whatever the attorney then determines who's going to take ownership because it's going to require retrofitting to harden the school.
And that's probably all you can do at this meeting is say we want to keep negotiating. And if those negotiations break down, we bring it back to the board, y'all can say less of it or however you want to do it.
Right now it's just to workshop and continue those negotiations with the county.
Okay. Number one on Lee, y'all heard Dr. Pickles, is there any discussion or any?
Well, I think that's a sound decision. That's just my opinion, but we continue to workshop, you know, with county and emergency management because whenever we use that central school, we're closing schools and children are missing educational opportunities. And then our teachers are volunteering out there so much and whatever, and they are being worked without compensation. So, you know, it's a whole responsibility of this county to do that. Those are my opinions.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan.
I was, I have, I don't have a problem with workshopping with the emergency management, but we also tapped on there, listing it with a realtor. So I'm not sure if those are two separate things. In other words, I, I'm for workshopping, blah, 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 but I'm, that part with listing with the realtor bothers me, having that, what, okay, Mr. Reeves.
I think, I think all you could do tonight is say, yeah, we want to keep negotiating with the county. If that doesn't prove fruitful, we should, we'll bring it back to the board.
Oh, okay.
And then at that point, y'all can decide, what do you want to do? You want to list it?
Because that's what I wanted to clear up.
That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we continue to work with the emergency management operations and the county officials to pursue turning Lee Elementary School into a emergency shelter.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Knight and a second by Ms. Hagan to continue to workshop with the Lee, with, with emergency, for, this is for Lee Elementary, workshop with emergency management and the county officials in the feasibility of operating a facility as an alternate shelter. So any more discussion on that? If not, all in favor of that, appreciate it. All right, that'd be 5.0. Okay, now we're going to Pioneer Elementary.
For Pioneer, the recommendation is just to sell the site as is. So either the board lists it for sale or the board enter with a realtor, that's up to the board. I don't believe.
Let me, can I chime in on that, Mr. Reeves? So the, your disposal of real property is governed by Section 101, 3.28, N1 for statutes. So you have to, by resolution, determine that it's unnecessary, that the plan is unnecessary for educational plant, educational purposes as recommended by an educational plan survey. That won't be hard to do, but that's something that has to be done first. But, and then the operative language is that the board is, the board shall take diligent measures to dispose of educational property only in the best interests of the public. Now, that's very broad and it gives you guys a lot of discretion, and this applies to all of the, all of the properties. I know when, I was previously, you know, the school board attorney over at Jefferson, and they built a new school and they had facilities to get rid of. But what happens with those is somebody comes in and they present a real good plan, and then you agree to that, and then somebody else comes in the next week with another plan you want to talk about. But you, you really kind of need to think out a process of, we're going to, to kind of let the public know that if you have plans or if you want to make proposals or whatever for these schools, you have until X day to do that, and then everybody can kind of come in at one time, so you avoid somebody coming in later. Now, you, you are allowed, when you're disposing of property in the best interests of the public, you're allowed to do that by having agreements with not-for-profit entities that they will take the property and use it for public purposes. It has to be public purposes. Some examples of that, I know in Hamilton County years ago, they gave a piece of property for use as a Boys and Girls Club that was open to the public and people were able to use. You also may determine, and it's a policy decision of this board, that the best interest of the public is to sell it and take that money and use it to provide educational services. When you, when you sell a piece of property, that money doesn't go just though in your general fund, the proceeds go, have to be used for the physical plant and, and those types of things. So you couldn't, for instance, get a pile of money by selling one of these and then bonus teachers, right? That's not allowed.
Physical plants.
Yeah, and I forget the exact term. It's facilities, I think, is the, is the exact term.
Got you.
But, but you've got lots and lots of discretion on that because that's your, it has to be dispose of educational property only in the best interests of the public. That's your standard, and that's a very broad standard. So my advice to you would be with these facilities is to make an announcement, a public announcement, saying, we're going to consider plans, including somebody may just want to buy it, you know, whatever, but give them a date and then, you know, and then you, you guys proceed from there. If you have any you know, though, we're not considering plans, we're just going to list it for sale, I mean, you certainly make that determination if y'all want to, but that's a, a policy decision that the school board has to make.
Pioneer Elementary, what's the discussions on Pioneer, Ms. Gibson?
I'm going back to what Mr. Reeves said. I, I like the idea, like we had Mr. Carnegie give his take tonight. And why are we in a big rush to do this? You know, in other words, what's the hurry? Let's give it some time and some thought before we make a decision, going back to what Mr. Reeves said. That's.
I agree as well.
You might want to go ahead, though, and think about having an announcement and setting a time.
Yes.
And, and saying, hey, we want proposals by X day.
Mr. Chair.
All right.
May I make that motion? Set a timeline?
You can.
Mr. Chair, I move that we set a timeline for the disposal of this property and let the general public know what we're planning to do, well, what we're accepting.
Considering.
Considering, yes. Thank you.
And probably the, the most expedient way to do that would be let superintendent figure out the timeline that she's comfortable with because she's got a lot on her plate with the, you know, with.
And I need to add that to let the superintendent decide. She has a lot on her plate now, so let her decide that timeline.
Okay. May I ask a question? Will these, will this still be as is?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
I don't think we would.
Second.
All right. Ms. Hagan, was that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Hagan, I have a motion for Ms. Hagan. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second by Ms. Knight.
To set a timeline.
And have an announcement to the public, giving them a deadline.
All right. This, this motion is to set a timeline and what the board's considering.
Accepting.
Accepting this.
From the public.
From the public on this facility. And I got a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Knight. Any more discussion on this? If not, all in favor, 5.0? Okay, going on down here to Greenville Elementary.
Greenville was the same motion to list for sale.
That applies to all the remaining properties that we're going to discuss.
I think it would apply to all of the remaining properties except for the annex.
So.
Okay.
For everything except the annex.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I speak on the annex?
Yes, you can. On the annex or?
Yes, sir.
Was we, I mean.
We've approved all the other ones.
No.
Okay.
I just said Pioneer, I didn't say all the rest of it. So we don't need to.
So if you want to make a motion. Manage your motion.
She wants to do them one by one.
Yeah. So I, I need a motion to, for the Greenville Elementary School.
I know that we considered the motion I just made.
Okay. Okay, to announce it?
Yes, sir.
The timeline?
Yes, sir. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson to, for the superintendent to set a timeline on what you are considering for Greenville Elementary School. And any more discussion on that? Can I say something on that?
Yes, sir.
Can I say something? I can say something?
Yeah, you're the chair, you're the special.
My, my thing really is I, I would like for us to, you know, keep in contact with Mr. Carnegie and, and, and the Greenville Committee on, on their proposal. And Mr. Carnegie, if you would, you know, kind of lock that thing down so, so we can, you know, be in negotiation with you about this. Okay, and you, you will know when the timeline is Dr. Pickles has set down.
Yes, sir.
All right, any more discussion? If not, all approve, I mean, all in favor, I'm sorry. Five zero. All right, we're going to, on to the annex.
District office.
Huh?
Do the district office.
Let's go to the district office.
Yeah, let's do the district office. All right, district office. What did you say? I'm trying to read. Uh, Ms. Hagan.
You know, I feel such a burden.
I know, I know.
I forget what I want to say. But anyway, the district office is going to be a problem selling this. EPA Environmental Protection Agency, with the bus barn over there, it's going to be a big problem. So, I don't know whether these people who are recommending that, and we've had this before, if they knew about all that. And honey, we'll be out more money than what we make. So, attorneys, speak on that, please.
Can I say something, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, we, we don't have any present knowledge there's contamination that would trigger reporting. But the problem is you've got a bus barn back there that's been in operation for, I don't know, 80 years maybe. And it started back before anybody paid any attention to environmental issues. My fear is that there would be some contamination there. And so, probably my recommendation to the board would be that, that regardless of what y'all do with the district office, you never sell this property, that we just keep it forever. The, the, but I think the first thing on that was you were going to ask, or the recommendation was to ask CRA about the feasibility of relocating. There's no reason you can't go ahead and do that. Just, I, I wouldn't depend on selling this property, you know, as part of that deal. But one of the things you also want to think about when you're talking about a district office, if you, if you move the district office on to the school grounds, now you, you've got it intermixed with school kids and all that. The, the people that are allowed to come to this office don't have to be Jessica Lunsford Act cleared. They can be felons, they can be whatever and come take care of business. If you put them on a school campus, especially if they're within that school building, you're going to have to have some, you're going to really have to think out some security and, and all of that kind of stuff.
So, the district would be free and open to the public.
Yeah, it, it's not just simply moving it up, moving it over there. You got to really, and CRA is the ones to think that out, but I'm just saying it's, that there's a lot of things that have to be thought through if you're going to do that.
Okay. Any more discussion on, on the district office?
Make a motion. I, Mr. Chair, I move that we not, I consider that our proposition on the facilities, that we not sell this property, the district office, not consider selling it.
I have a motion by Ms. Hagan to not, not consider selling the property.
Second.
Can we have a second by Ms. Gibson? Do we have any more discussion on this? Again, can I say something? I can say something?
Sure.
My thing is I, I do think that we ought to, you know, discuss with the CRA the feasibility of relocating, just to discuss it. I mean, you know, and we don't have to do it, but just to see. I think you mentioned that would be, that would be fine.
Yes, sir.
You know, it, it may be something other that, you know, we're not aware of and, and some things like that, so...
And, and they do this all over. They may figure something out we hadn't thought of.
Right, right. So, I, I, for me, now, this is me. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with, with discussing with CRA the feasibility of relocating the, the district office. Not, I ain't saying...
My motion is not sale.
Not sale, but...
I'd say that's a different one with CRA.
Yeah, y'all good with that? All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hagan and we have a second by Ms. Gibson to not sell the, the property, but to discuss the feasibility with CRA about relocating the, the people from the district office. Any more discussion?
Well, I, I just, if CRA comes back with, with findings that gives us permission to sell the building, you know, then it's financially in our best interest to sell the building. I mean, the whole goal is to get rid of assets that are draining us and this asset will drain us. So, I think not selling the building, if it's allowable after the feasibility study is not, if, we're not being good fiduciaries of our, our money. That's my discussion.
Now, so CRA, they, they, they...
Clem's rather for this, our current architecture.
I know, but I mean, do they, I mean, determine if there's contamination there or not?
You, you could certainly ask their opinion on it and if they come back again with something we hadn't thought about, y'all can reconsider. I mean, you're not, you're not saying that next meeting, y'all can't make a different motion in a second and do something different.
Do you want to vote on just the motion to keep?
I think that the motion needs to be that we continue to do the feasibility study and we discuss selling the property after the feasibility study is what I think the motion is to do.
Should we treat this as two separate motions?
Well, I will amend my motion.
Ms. Hagan, you...
I will amend my motion.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Hagan.
I would say okay.
To continue negotiation with CRA for a feasibility study.
That's your second motion.
Is that the entire motion?
The, the first one that I made.
The first one that you made about...
And that's, and I amended to include that.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson to continue the feasibility study to see if what comes back and at that time determine, I mean, if it's feasible to, to sell it, then we sell it, right? Is that, is that what we're saying?
We revisit it based on the feasibility study.
Based on the feasibility study, based on that.
So, we will be revisiting the sale.
Yes, yes.
That's because I'm going back to what Mr. Reeves said. I don't want anyone to be prevented because of something they did four, 50 years ago, you know, a felon that's not being able to attend meetings.
Right.
A district office is open to everything, everybody.
So, if you...
So, if it's on the campus, that's going to be a bit, bit of money too, so...
So, I, I mean, feasibility study will show that, I would think. So, any more discussion on that? All in favor of five zero? All right, we're going back up here to annex. On the annex, go ahead, Dr. Pickles.
For the annex, negotiate a reasonable price with the Madison Educational Association or Association Credit Union, or Credit Union, or a first right of refusal for the facility. It's my understanding, Mr. Tommy may know, or the board attorney may know, how long it, there was years and years ago that the district entered into some type of agreement. I haven't found it in the paper minutes, that the district would provide space for the association, so...
And they bought the utilities and they did some work to it, too.
Yeah, I think, and Robin, do, do you know where that document is? There, there was a lease agreement, I remember, years ago.
There was, I don't know where it is.
Would that be to happen?
I think probably the first thing...
It was somewhere in the paper minutes.
Yeah. I, I think the first thing is we need to get our hands on that lease agreement because if we guaranteed them so many years, then you can't sell it out front of them, you have to honor that. And then, but I, I remember, I remember there being an issue that came up that we had to try to find that agreement and nobody could lay their hands on it. Now, I don't remember if the way we resolved it is we signed a new agreement. I, I don't remember those details. So, that's number one. I think you need to find the old agreement. And then, number two, once you find the old agreement, ask the, the credit union for their, what, for their proposal. And I think you probably do that before you would announce it publicly, you know, see what, if, if they're interested in, in the building or interested in paying for it or not paying for it or whatever.
And they are interested. They've made it very clear, so...
Yes.
They were in the beginning and purchased it.
So...
Okay. What's the...
Ms. Gibson.
I'll tell you what I remember. I remember them being interested in it. This is a, you know, could be five, six years ago, so they were definitely interested. That's my memory, so...
And my memory, Mr. Chair, was the same thing, that we did give lease to them and that they would pay the utilities. And they did some remodeling and all that remodeling was at their expense. All we said that we provided with them and let them use the space, but they would be responsible for everything on the land.
So, if we, if we list the place and we sell, and we sell the place...
First refusal.
Then, you know, I mean, and we have to provide them something that, that they may not want that. They may want that.
Uh huh.
You see what I'm saying about that?
That's exactly, that's why first refusal.
Yeah.
Give them first refusal.
So, what's the pleasure, pleasure of...
Ms. Hill.
Ms. Hill, come up front, please. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think if we check the board minutes from April 1st, 2019, we'll find that information.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was fast, Miss Hill, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Thursday.
You looking that up?
Yeah.
I remember some things.
There is, 2.1.
Does it have a copy of the agreement?
I'm trying to see. I think it does. It does, on 2.1.
It's also on the April 15th agenda of that year, so I don't know if it was voted on in that meeting or put to another meeting.
So, I guess this one's the latest one, then.
That's not the agreement, that's a proposal.
Oh, they want to buy it, right? I mean, they're interested in buying.
Is that right? They were interested in purchasing it?
Yes, at that time.
It says the credit union would ask, should it ever come up for sale? That they have the first right of refusal.
That's just what it's got, right?
Well, and that's what they said in 2019. I, we still need to...
Yeah.
Touch base with them and see what they want.
Oh, she's already spoken to me. So, they are still very interested, so, and, and I did let Ms. Hill know that since she was the chair of the facilities. They have, but they still have a very limited budget. They not only service the employees of the school district, they also service the members of the college. So, that's the reason it's, they need a very public space.
This is what it says here, "We have been a service to the employees since 1963." And then it says, "Not sure if it was a verbal or a handwritten agreement." So, it could have just been, uh, let's shake hands and this is what we're going to do if it was from 1963, so...
All right.
Mr. Chair? May I move to go into negotiation to, with Madison Education Association Credit Union to purchase the annex building?
I have a motion by Ms., do I have a second? I have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Gibson. Did you or Ms. Hagan? Ms. Hagan, a second?
I shook my head, but you...
Oh, you shook it, yes. By Ms. Hagan to, to negotiate with the Madison Education Association Credit Union on purchasing the annex and have the first right to refusal for that facility. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor of five zero? Okay, now, the table of recommendations, Dr. Pickles.
No, 5.7, which was the E-Rate contract.
We're going to do that, we're going to do that before we do that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I was looking at my, my arrow. So, yes, are tabled. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Sorry.
So, the board asked me, we had tabled the AD information. I did speak with the negotiating attorney and found out some information. So, based on my notes, we would need to have a job description. I provided one. He asked me to search one county, waited to hear back from the superintendent. He could not locate that particular one, so did obtain a couple of others. The one before you is the one that is most like our job descriptions. He said I would need to just put in who it reports to, so in the, our recommendations, it was the, they would need to report to the superintendent. It, anybody would all need to reapply, so anybody that's interested.
I have some questions about this job qualification and the one is number four. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Okay, hold on just a minute and not, can I finish talking through it?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I forgot.
So, this is all up for debate. We can talk through it. I was going to finish telling you, this one's adopted from Putnam. I also have two others that I could pull others from. The one thing I did want to, I took out and, and put in a, because technically they don't supervise, but they have oversight of the athletic coaches. They don't really supervise. Although it does say down on number 10, it says they supervise the athletic coaches. So, it's a word play, how we want to do it. They would still, according to the union contract, the supplement is paid per the bargaining agreement. They would still, everything else would be paid. This is not a whole separate contract or anything. They would be paid just like our normal salary. So, there's nothing different. This is just the job description for that AD supplement. So, this is an example because ours is a stipend. Ours is not a whole separate, like our administrative contracts. So, another one, because we do currently have two, there's also been some discussion back and forth. I know at our last meeting, possibly having two, I believe there were some possibly discussions about having an assistant AD. And I know there was also working with the, the multiple principals at all the school, at all four schools. So, there are some of that that will have to be put in here. So, now...
That's okay, so we will be going back over this job description later?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll save mine for later.
Yes. But anything that you do want, let me know so that we can try to finalize this, so that we can get it to the union, so...
Okay, now, is there, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to move forward and accept the job description of countywide athletic director.
We have a motion by Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Ms. Thompson. Is there any more discussion on this?
I'm looking on, it says here, AD duties will need to be staffed by other MCHS members. Now, what does that mean?
So, currently, Coach Harris and has one period release for his AD duties. So, one of the other PE teachers picks up that particular physical ed class.
Okay.
So, that's where during negotiations, if we decide... So, that's where during negotiations, if we decide a full-time county, if we do a two-period release, it's just however many classes, based on staffing at the high school, the number of students, how many PE classes.
All right. AD will not be able to teach a full load of classes at Madison County High School?
That's the same, yeah.
Okay. In other words, someone else has to teach it, though, right?
That one or two period release.
Okay, all right. I'd like to know what the, I don't think you're going to give me, be able to give me an answer on this, the cost savings. You say it has to be negotiated, right? So, we don't know what the cost savings is.
The supplement amount, whether they stay with an AD, which is the current, and they stay with that one, or if they decide to have an AD and an assistant, and they stay with the two.
Okay. I'm wondering what the benefit to the students, employees, and taxpayers is going to be to do this?
One person, trying to go to one person for the four schools? Or two people? And there's a lot of paperwork.
So, this would just be one person, then? There wouldn't be anybody at Central, this would just be one person?
Well, it could be two, having that assistant doing this, like the AD and an assistant AD.
Okay.
But having that direct report.
I understand. Okay, approximately, we learned either the last meeting or the week before, we will be getting, be responsible for approximately $100,000 for the repairs, which I don't begrudge it at all. That's a lot of money, to me, that's a lot of money. So, that, in other words, money's going here and there. And I, right now, to say yes, it's okay, let's do it. We don't know how much it's going to cost us. It's got to be negotiated. So, I don't, I don't like saying, okay, it's all right, without knowing all the facts and figures. That's, and that's just me, I'm not going to debate it. I mean, that's just, I, we don't have the money to keep our schools going. We have the decreased enrollment. We have teachers that need, their salaries elevated. In other words, that's all I have to say about it. Thank you for the information.
Okay, any more discussion? We have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Thompson. Any more? All approved, I mean, all in favor? All opposed?
Three, two, and then.
Remember to announce those opposed.
Oh, and, I'm sorry, y'all, Ms. Hagan and Ms. Gibson opposed.
And then the date it becomes effective, does this start immediately? Start next year, when is it?
It's next, no, it has to be next.
Next school year?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, okay, that's good. We have 5.7 E-rate contracts, Mr. Boyer.
Kind of kick off, we left off earlier, to the internet. So, these are three contracts, one's for our internet access, one is for the connection between the Central and the high school, and the other is called MIBs, internal broadband service. The MIBs one is only for one year, it's just for next school year, finishing out our available category two budget with E-rate. The internet and the WAN are both three-year contracts, which is pretty typical for what we've done last several years. Both, as Mr. Tommy said, both contracts have for termination, for cause and without cause. In addition to that, they also have non-appropriation clause. So, if money is not appropriated, then that's the other way we can get out of them.
But do you see any, as the attorney was discussing, without just cause, do you see any way that we would terminate this contract without just cause?
Unless the internet disappears. I mean, that's the thing, we're going to need internet, so it's, it's something we know we're going to have.
So, some of these things that will come up, would probably put us with just cause if it happens with someone else?
Yeah, I mean, if we have trouble with the, you know, if we have trouble we don't like them, then we can terminate for cause and be out without penalty.
Okay.
So, as long as we don't have any issues with them, we're saying we're going to go with this vendor for the next three years.
Okay. Where was the non-appropriation clause? I missed that, I'm sorry.
It's in the, it's in Attachment B.
B as in boy?
Yeah, B as in boy on page, which one are you looking at?
The first one.
It's part of the internet. It's on page of the internet, it's on page 38. Attachment B has E-rate specific terms and conditions, and number six is the appropriations one.
At the bottom.
Thank you, hold. Any more questions? I mean, do I have a motion to, for this?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the E-rate contract.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Hagan to accept the E-rate contracts. Is there any discussion from anybody? If not, all in favor? All right, Superintendent?
We have a meeting at 10 o'clock tomorrow. Just want to remind everyone, you do not have to be here. Met with DOE last week. Thank you for submitting questions. Those questions have been provided. I will either have a staff member to respond to a question if DOE does not feel that's in their purview. Then we have our rule days coming up, Wednesday and Thursday. So, three of us will be traveling at least two of the days over. DOE officials will be on site at both Greenville Elementary and Central School this Friday and the following Friday to do walkthroughs in preparation for our upcoming state board meeting. So, coming along at our baseball and softball complex. Baseball has their first game in action tonight. Softball will play next week. They have a home game tomorrow, but we have to have it at our rec park tomorrow night, so our recreation facilities. They are in Tallahassee tonight, and their Friday game, I believe, is in Swanee County, don't quote me.
That's it, I think it's over.
Oh, Friday. But tomorrow's game is here at 5:00, Field 5. So, I appreciate the county recreation department and our county manager for working with us to allow us to use their field. And so, they were putting the blocks up today on the dugout on the softball field, so it'll be ready this week for softball, so we'll be ready for our girls. So, that's the biggest, and I know that our staff enjoyed their time off last week and hit the ground running back again today. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, thank you so much. Reeves?
No, sir, not unless you've got questions with me.
Okay, Ms. Gibson?
I would just like to welcome everyone back, and I think the end is in sight right now. And actually, I was able to visit a couple of schools today and saw a lot of green and happy childrens. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I just want to thank our student for coming and praying for us this evening. It's always a pleasure to have our students come in. I'd also like to just take an opportunity, since it was oversight on our part at our last board meeting, and I would like to congratulate Coach Harris on a big win on his coach of the year. And thank you for, thank you for all that you're doing for the programs, and I look forward to an exciting year moving forward with all of our sports.
I would just like to say, welcome back. I hope you all had a wonderful and restful spring break. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for everybody coming out. I know they're gone, but I enjoyed the Dr. Boyer and Mr. Harmon, their presentation. Appreciate them doing that. Mr. Cornigay, thank you for coming over, appreciate you. And, you know, I'd just like to thank everybody for what they're doing and moving forward, and it's a stressful time, but it's going to be an exciting time that's coming. So, thank you all, everybody. That's all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.